This is June 29, 2011 and is one of a series of public meetings that we're holding throughout the county. I want to thank you for joining us here at Bellevue City Hall. And we thank also the city of Bellevue for hosting us for our meeting tonight. Those of you in attendance should know that our, tonight's meeting is being delayed broadcast on Bellevue TV Channel 21 as well as King County Channel 22, which will be broadcast in the next week. I'd like to begin the program by talking a little bit about the role of the district and committee as well as hearing, let you hear from our expert, John Slosser, GIS expert, with the various drafts that are in front of you. And then open up the meeting here tonight to hear from you, which is really the reason why we're here. Prelimarily, I'd like to recognize a number of public officials who are here tonight and acknowledge them and thank them for their attendance. Richard Cole, who's on the Redmond City Council, is here. Richard, would you raise your hand so we can see who you are? Thank you. Hank Myers, who's on the City Council of Redmond, is here, sitting next to Richard. Thank you. David Hutchison, Mayor of Lake Forest Park. David, where are you? Thank you also for joining us tonight. And Lisa Jensen, who's on the City Council of the city of Newcastle, is here tonight. Thank you for joining us as well. As you may know, the law requires the King County Council lines be drawn every 10 years following a national census, and that really is what brings us here. The current maps of the council districts were drawn approximately seven or eight years ago when the city council, excuse me, the county council was reduced from 13 members to nine members by public vote. And it was the 2000 census that was really the template that was used for drawing the lines back in 2004, 2005. You might be surprised to know that there's been significant growth in King County. King County is the, is a, is a district of our state that is much larger than many people realize. It is the size of 14 of our states. There are 39 municipalities in King County. It's a large area. The population between 2000 and 2010 grew by 11.2%. But one of the things that draws us together and requires us to take a look at it is that that growth wasn't the same throughout the county. There were some districts, and particularly on the eastern side of the county, that grew considerably more than the west, western part of the county. For example, the city of Seattle grew by 8%. And the northeast part of the county grew, at least the district that encompasses the northeast, grew by 27%. All that means that the law that brings us together here and requires us to do this means that the lines have to be redrawn to reflect those population changes. And that, in essence, is our assignment. All of us on this committee, my colleagues here tonight and myself, are volunteers. We're not county employees. We are individuals that the county council selected by four colleagues. And for whatever reason, they probably regret they selected me to act as their chair. That's how and why we got here. You should know also that, in brief, there's been an evolution of the law of redistricting over the years. The history briefly is that some of you who have a legal background know that Baker versus Carr was a key US Supreme Court decision 40 or 50 years ago that set up the one person, one vote requirement. There are also Voting Rights Acts passed throughout our history, but particularly in the 1960s by Congress. But since then, there's been an evolution in the courts and the legal system, laws that guide a committee like this in terms of what the legal requirements are for what we have to do. And real briefly, we are required to create districts that are compact, contiguous, and composed of economic and geographic units as best we can. Population data may also not be used for purposes of favoring or disfavoring any racial group or political party. We're also required to consider other factors, for example, city boundaries, natural features, and communities of interest. Before we develop the four maps that you have in front of you, and I would urge you, if you haven't, to obtain one from the desk in the foyer here to our hall, as well as the agenda, those four maps were developed following public meetings that we held across the coun, excuse me, across the county. And the four maps are there for discussion further here tonight. Each of those maps, as you're going to hear from our expert, explains a way in which we have to draw equally populated districts. Not exactly equal, but as equal as we can make them. It meets the legal requirements that I just described. And we want to hear from you what your perception is of these plans. And we're going to have, over the next several weeks, additional meetings. We had one last night, for example, in Shoreline. And this one tonight in Bellevue. And then next week in Des Moines, I believe, and then also in Seattle. And then in late July, we'll begin synthesizing what we've learned in order to draw a single final plan. This plan has to be approved by this committee by January 12 of 2012, excuse me, January 15. But we intend to beat that deadline and have something probably by early fall for you. When we get to a final draft, we'll also have a public meeting following that. The final plan will be up to us to draw. Our decision is final. It's not subject to any other court approval. Of course, it's subject to court challenge, but beyond that, this committee has the responsibility to make the decision on what the outlines of the council districts might be. I'd like now to turn to John Slosser, our GIS expert, who's going to talk about the four maps. And I might let you know that the current map, which is this behind, is the current situation behind me. And also, if you picked up an agenda, on the back of the agenda is the current map so that you can look at, for your practical purposes, at least for your own edification, what the current situation is. John, go ahead.
Thank you. So I thought we'd start with a little overview of the geography of the county as it pertains to, as it pertains to redistricting. And then we'll go through each of the four drafts that you have before you, prepared and presented by the committee, and highlight some of the differences between and among them. So what we see on the screen in front of you is an outline of, as Chair Carroll said, an outline of the current district boundaries. District numbers are there, and then there are these funny terms, expand by this much and shrink by this much. By that, we mean, these are the changes needed in the county to bring them into a state of balance with respect to population. So just as a quick look at how things were after the previous redistricting, the existing districts, based on the year 2000 census, very much in balance. If we look at the year 2010 census, the same districts, so the same shapes, quite a bit out of balance. That's what we're trying to deal with here. Bring these into balance with respect to population primarily, but also with respect to some of the other considerations that the chair mentioned. It's more than just population. Yes, that's a beautiful goal. Never going to get down to the exact person, being equal across all the population, across all the districts, but, you know, hope to get close. And then there are these other considerations mentioned, considerations such as, such as communities of mutual interest, considerations with respect to city boundaries, considerations about, relevant to other things, including things perhaps that we don't think about as often, like what are the school district catchment areas, or maybe watersheds. All of those things can be considered. So if we look at the boundaries that we now work with, I think it's fair to say that the last committee made a real effort to also look at where city boundaries were. So that's a starting point, and that's certainly one of the considerations going forward. But things do have to change, and that's what we're here to talk about. This again is the current district boundaries. And I just want to show some areas that have been pointed out to the committee in the course of its public meetings and internal discussions, some things that have really been the subject of some discussion to help the committee come to conclusions about where new boundaries should be drawn. So there are several areas of the county that people have brought to everyone's attention as being important. And here's one area I'm showing on the screen. And this is the area of some of the small cities in the eastern part of the county. It's a little dim on the screen, but you have some handouts, I think you can follow along there. Carnation, Snoqualmie, North Bend, these are cities that do a lot of things together. And definitely true that the committee has heard testimony and gotten feedback about the utility of not being, not, not creating separations where that separation doesn't have to be. Another area is toward the north end of the county. The North Shore cities, Shoreline, Lake Forest Park, Kenmore. There's certainly been discussion about that being an area where, again, not to dictate what the boundary should look like, but just to say, this is something that needs to be seriously considered. Here's another area. This is the area to the north and, and west of Renton. It's the skyline potential annexation area, so-called. It's not incorporated. It's not in Renton. It's not in the city of Seattle. And under the current boundaries, as you can see from the map, it is split between District Two, which is primarily a Seattle district, and the district to the south. Another area of interest and consideration that I've observed the committee struggling with and considering is this part of the county that maybe we could think of as the airport cities. Smaller cities where there's been a significant impact on, on the part of the Seattle Tacoma International Airport. You can see that in the current boundaries, Sea-Tac is a little bit truncated there toward the north. Burien's fully in one district. Toquill is kind of split down the middle. Des Moines is fully in District Five. It's an area of cities which have, you know, similarity in scale and perhaps a similarity in other ways. So these are things that have come to the attention of the committee, at least as far as I've overheard things. This isn't the committee's posture. These are just some observations on my part. Well, that's led, led to, that and just internal discussions have led to some discussion of, of four distinct drafts, the ones that are on the poster boards out there, thanks to Simon Ferretta and the good people with the King County staff. There are some distinct differences between and among the four drafts. We'll go through some of the particulars on a draft-by-draft basis here in just a minute. But just as a high level, let me point out some areas where these drafts are significantly different. Again, we're looking by background at the existing boundaries. This isn't any one of the single, any single one of the four drafts. This is the current 2005 boundaries. So the drafts that you'll see, the four drafts in your handout and out in front, do treat the Sea-Tac area somewhat differently. Definitely see some differences. That's something to look for as you page through your drafts. The potential annexation area I mentioned earlier, between Renton and the city of Seattle, currently split. Several of the drafts have that fully within District Five, several of the proposed drafts. And one of the drafts has it fully within District Two. Very distinct difference there. Okay. Well, over here in the Issaquah direction. Issaquah is now fully within the District Three, isn't it? Several of the drafts treat it quite differently. Sometimes it's split. In one of the drafts, it's fully within the Bellevue District, District Six. Well, speaking of District Six, it's heretofore always really had Mercer Island within it. One of the drafts you'll see tonight, we'll cover it briefly, puts Mercer Island in District Perhaps that'll generate some testimony tonight. Other things that are specific areas of interest or contrast between and among the drafts. Looking here at the area just to the, the east of Green Lake in the city of Seattle, the border there between District Two and District One at Northeast 75th Street, one of the drafts brings that border south to the Ship Canal, making District One extend all the way south to the Ship Canal, including the University of Washington, of course. The other three drafts keep the line approximately where it is, but shift it maybe a few blocks one way or the other in a north-south direction. Finally, here in the northwest, District Four has heretofore, it follows Aurora Avenue north on its eastern border up toward the city limits, doesn't really extend to the city limits as yet in its current incarnation, but two of the drafts extend it up to the county line and encompassing approximately half of the city of Shoreline. So that would make District Four, whoever the representative is, be a representative for half of Shoreline, the shore, half of Shoreline, as well as most of District Four. Of course, this is a little bit like a nine-way teeter totter, isn't it? You start moving population from one district to another, and it shifts it for the other districts, the adjacent ones. So if there is to be a move, for example, like the one I just talked about, where District Four might extend to the north, then probably there's a contraction on the southern boundary. So there are some changes coming up as proposed by the draft with respect to downtown, depending on which draft the committee ultimately adopts. That is, in one of the drafts, or several of the drafts, District Four retains its coverage of downtown Seattle. In others, that downtown area becomes part, for example, of District Eight. Okay. So those are things at a high level that you might want to look for as you, as we go through each of the four specific drafts. So let me turn to those, those specifics. Everybody get the handouts? Okay. I know it's hard to shrink down a very big plot to a little tiny size, especially if you have eyes that are older than 40 years old. A little rundown on draft map one then. Population numbers for these lines are displayed. You'll see they're not exactly the same. That's actually intentional. I don't think it's been in the committee's or probably the taxpayers' interest to have people be balancing down to the iota at this stage. Things are quite high level, I would say. There's a lot of interest in getting specific input, and that more exact balancing, if it's necessary at all, can happen toward the end of the process. So for draft map number one, which we're seeing at the top, excuse me, on the screen in front of you, just mentioned some highlights about it. This is one of the drafts that shifts the boundary of District Four, which has been primarily to the west side of the city of Seattle, shifts that northern boundary up to the county line to encompass substantial share of the city of Shoreline. In so doing, it shifts also the southern border of that district to exclude downtown Seattle, giving downtown Seattle in this plan to District Eight. This is also a draft that moves District One substantially south. Opposite District Four, split by Interstate Five. You'll see District One, which previously was on the southern border, was at about Northeast 75th, right about, even with Green Lake, remember? That border, under this plan, would go south to the Lake Washington Ship Canal. And District Two, in this plan, a marked change shows that it would encompass approximately 50% of Renton. So it becomes a good chunk of the southern Lake Washington, lake shore, including that potential annexation area between Seattle and Renton, as well as the northern chunk of the city of Renton. Other highlights or changes, District Five, this is the district that has encompassed much of the Sea-Tac Airport area. It would encompass more of Burien and, as much as half of it, as well as the entire city of Normandy Park. It doesn't have any of Normandy Park now, but it would under this plan. Well, what's happening in the Issaquah area? Well, under this plan, Issaquah, which heretofore has been in District Three entirely, would have half of its population still in District Three, the north half, and split approximately by the I-5 corridor, the southern part of Issaquah would become part of District Nine. Both Three and Nine being districts that encompass a whole lot of rural King County, don't they? But this would put Issaquah in, in two districts rather than one. In the case of District Six, there's a change in the vicinity of Willow's Road for Rent, for Redmond. Instead of Redmond being essentially entirely in District Three, which is the way it's been, this would put approximately half of Redmond, the area ha, to the west of Willow's, in District Six. Okay. Let me shift to another plan. Let's go, let's look at Plan Number Two. Well, let's start with the district that's in honor of the location of our, our hearing tonight, the District Six and District Two situation. Something that would be a break from the past is to put Mercer Island, if this plan is approved, or a variation on it. Mercer Island would become part of District Two. It's not in District Six with, with Bellevue, but moved to District Two. Other changes to District Six, you lose that much population from the Mercer Island side of the district. You need to make that up. We've got to keep it balanced, right? So under this plan, District Six is expanded to the south and, and east, and it keeps Issaquah within a single district, but that district is now different. The district is no longer District Three. It is now, Issaquah is now part of District Six. Some changes in the airport. The airport cities in the vicinity of the airport, quite a lot more of Sea-Tac is included under this plan in District Eight. It's down here. You can see that green line on the background. And if you have both of your maps, the one on the back of your agenda and the one that we're talking about right now, you can put them right up next to each other and kind of glance back and forth between them and see these changes more clearly. So District Eight in this plan is expanded southward to include more of the city of Sea-Tac. You know, in all these plans, there have been a, a fair number of, I'll call them not extreme, but still perhaps significant to the people who live there, changes along these north-south lines, the line here between District Five and District Nine that runs between Renton and south through the edge of Kent, and along the edges of the Enham Claw, Black Diamond, Covington, Maple Valley area. Some little changes along the lines. If you line these plans up, you'll see there have been some block changes. Some of those are just to balance out population. But in some of those, some of these areas, particularly since we're talking about Kent, this area in the southeast of Kent, some of this land area is small in geographic extent, but the density of housing is great. A lot of people live there, so even small changes make a big difference when it comes to balancing population. One final comment on this plan, which is Plan Two. District Three is now slightly changed up here near the county line so that Woodinville is entirely within District Three. Previously, there was a piece of Woodinville that was over in District One. Okay, let's move to the next one. Plan Three. What's notable and different about Plan Three? Well, this is a plan like Plan One that does extend District Four here in the northwest from the city of Seattle up into and including approximately half of Shoreline, a little bit less of Shoreline than Plan One, but still a major, major chunk of the city of Shoreline becomes part of District Four under this plan. It has the same consequence down toward the south by downtown Seattle, same consequence as the district, excuse me, Plan One, in that this downtown area of Seattle no longer part of District Four, now shifted into District Eight. Let's look at this part of District Two. The District Two is the district that currently extends from about Northeast 75th by Green Lake, follows Lake Washington Shoreline down to the southern end of Seattle. It has been fairly narrow for the north-south geographic extent. In this plan, as in the plan we're coming to next, the width is, is enlarged so that it encompasses quite a bit more in an east-west direction of Capitol Hill here in central Seattle, as well as Beacon Hill. Under this plan, which is Plan Three again, draft Plan Three, the potential annexation area we talked about between Renton and the city of Seattle is fully within District Two. It's not split anymore. In fact, none of these four plans would leave that annexation area, potential annexation area, split between districts. It's either in one or the other. That's the West Hill Skyway area. Okay. In the south of the county, District Nine shifts to the west, the border there with District Seven, takes more of Kent, and as a boundary, uses the Kent Black Diamond Road. That's perhaps a more recognizable boundary than some of these smaller streets that have been boundaries for these districts in this area of the county in the past. Issaquah, Issaquah is still in District Three. Hasn't changed at all. It's entirely in District Three. There've been some changes here in District Six with respect to how the city of Bellevue is split between the two districts, District Six and District Nine. A lot of this area that's changed hands, if you will, between one district and another is, is park area. Those of you that know the city of Bellevue well, maybe have gone hiking there. So there really aren't that many people involved, but there are quite a few new residential areas up there, and it's some, some beautiful views from up there as well. District Six changes also in the north and the east. I mentioned previously, another plan shifted territory along Willow's Road. This one does too. Redmond is split in this plan, part of it, still in District Three, but a major chunk shifting over to District Six. And some other significant changes here in the north, where District One is shifted south. You know, Kirkland's just gone through a recent annexation, hasn't it? I think the annexation results were made effective the first part of this month. We're still in June, aren't we? This plan would put much of that Juanita, Finn Hill, this area in the northern part of what's now Kirkland would be in District One. Okay, that's draft Plan Three. Think that covers some highlights. Let's move to the fourth one. Draft Plan Four. Starting with District Two this time, this plan also has District Two become wider, encompassing even more of Capitol Hill and Beacon Hill and First Hill. District Four is much the same as before. Little change there to the northeast, but District Four would stop at the city limits, the Seattle city limits, the boundary between Shoreline and city of Seattle. Some change with District One, primarily to the east, to get the added population. Remember, District One, like most of the districts, the exception of Three and Nine, needed to add people, so it has to expand somewhere. In this plan, it expands, it gets the extra people it needs by expanding just slightly to the south by Green Lake, but gets quite a few people by including all of Woodinville. So that North Shore set of small cities, including Woodinville, Kenmore, Bothell, Lake Forest Park, Shoreline, those are within a single district. Not all of Bothell, some of it's in Snohomish County, right? Redmond is again split. That's just one of the things that most of the plans seem to feel they must do. Otherwise, District Three, which was overweight, if you will, that, that extra population has to go somewhere. We can't ask the people to move. There needs to be a way to shrink District Three, and also District Nine for that matter. This plan also has the city of Issaquah entirely in District Three, as it now is. That's not a change. District Six changes a little bit on the south boundary, but its, its biggest change is over there in the vicinity of Redmond. In the airport area, District Eight does expand a little bit to the south. City of Sea-Tac being that tan shape in the middle. So you can see where the boundary used to be across the north end of the, the runways and the terminal area, and now moving that line down to South 188th. With respect to the potential annexation area we keep talking about, I keep talking about, between Renton and the city of Seattle, that area is entirely within District Five in this plan. Okay. So I think we've covered it. You know, there are a lot of areas in which these plans You know, there are a lot of areas in which these plans are similar. It was interesting to me in working this out, you tend to want to put the district number in the middle of its district, and I, in my work process, would shift plans, and I would find that I don't have to move that number at all, because by and large, the shapes are approximately the same, the areas they cover are approximately the same, but there have been some pretty substantial changes along the edges, and those are the ones that we tried to highlight at the very beginning. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, John, for that presentation, and, you know, it's been our practice, if there are any questions that any of the people who have taken the time to come here tonight have of John, just questions, we'll have time for testimony later, we certainly welcome those questions if anyone has as we get ready for public input. Does anybody have any questions of John Slasher? And I think I should remind you also that it isn't so much a requirement at all that we choose among these four alternatives. These are alternatives that we asked John to help us draw as we had our earlier hearings and our own discussions that represent alternatives to the status quo. The final draft that we come up with is likely to be drawn from these four, but it isn't required that we do so. It could be a combination thereof in terms of the final deliberation that we have, and I think that clarification might help you. Let's turn now to some public comment, which is really the reason for this hearing and these discussions that we're going to have tonight with you are very important to us. I think, I speak for my colleagues on the committee, that we have learned an awful lot from the public meetings and from hearing from you, so it is very valuable for us that you have taken the time to come and either listen and/or participate. If you are going to talk, for those of you who got here late, you should know that this hearing is being broadcast both on Bellevue TV rebroadcast, as well as King County Channel. In looking at those of you who have asked to talk to us tonight, let's start with the elected officials if we could, and Richard Cole, who is on City Council Redmond, was the first person to sign up, and as I understand it, we're going to have you step forward I think there should be a mic, I can't exactly tell from here, I think there's a mic straight ahead there, Richard, for you.
I may be a little bit tall for this one.
Well, there ought to be some way of making this more palatable. Let me ask Simon Fred, Simon, how do we intend to do the public testimony here? See where Richard Conlin is standing, is that what we want?
Should we turn this around?
Why don't we turn it around so that people might have a few notes or something?
I mean, I can lean over, so that's no problem.
Does the microphone fit in that slot?
Sure does. I'll be your guinea pig. So my name's Richard Cole from Redmond City Council, and I want to thank you for being here again tonight. As you'll remember, I testified before, and we also submitted written testimony having to do with the preference of keeping two districts in Redmond, and we're glad to see that all four of the alternatives do that. Among those, I think our preferences are Three and Four. We don't see a lot of difference as far as the city limits go. They're both approximately equal in the amount between the two districts, but our overall preference is really draft number Four. And it is, and the other issue I brought up is the city of Seattle proportionally really should have about three seats, and the way this is drafted, they have three seats plus a little bit of at least one other one. And I think Four, as I try to look at my little tiny scale map at home, Four probably is the best from that perspective. The only other issue I was going to bring up, and I don't see Councilmember Lambert here or not, but as I look down at the very bottom of draft of District Three, it looked like there was a little sliver of Bellevue that was in her district. And I know she was at our meeting the other night, and I consider that almost cruel and unusual punishment, she's got so many cities to begin with, and if I'm reading that correctly, I would like to ask you to fix that.
On Map Four?
On Map Four, yeah. And again, it's just a little white area down there, and I may be misreading it, but I'd like you to consider that. No?
Thanks, so John Slasher, could you answer Mr. Cole's question directly? District Three on Map Four? It doesn't appear to me, but I'm not sure, is there any part of that?
If it's there, it's unintentional, and I think we could easily clean that up. I don't think there's any intent.
She brought that to our council's attention on Tuesday, so I said I'd bring it up tonight. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Hank Myers?
Could we ask a question?
Oh, sure, we can. Did you want to ask him?
Councilmember Cole?
Richard, could you step forward here?
Do you mind taking a question? Some of our maps are using Willows Road with respect to dividing Redmond. Is that an appropriate boundary to use?
I think as long as it's clear. One of them uses Willows, I'd have to get them out again. I think number Four, looks like it moves it over to the Redmond-Woodinville Road. And as I said, the scale of maps I was looking at, it's difficult for me to tell, but either one is a good dividing line for us, I don't know.
Maybe Three, we come up or follow generally west Lake-Samamish Parkway?
Right, I believe so. But both Three and Four sort of split it down the middle, which is what we, the city and the council had asked for.
What's the philosophy on asking, from the city's perspective, on asking that the city be represented on the regional governing body by two council members?
Well, I think it's, you know, the east side is somewhat a homogeneous type area, but the city of Redmond is different. I mean, on our eastern side, we have a lot of the rural area that more fits in number Three, and on the western side of the city, it's more dense in our business area, and of course, the Microsoft campus area. So, we think that's sort of a natural split.
Thank you.
Any other questions for my colleagues? Thank you again, Mr. Cole. Hank Myers?
I'm Hank Myers, Redmond City Council. Like Mr. Cole, I'm speaking on my own behalf. My preferences for number Three, and the reason for that is because I'm so much younger than Richard, and I'm looking ahead to 2020 and 2030, and we know from our growth management and from our Puget Sound Regional Council studies, that Districts Three and Districts Nine will continue to add population at greater rates than other districts to the west. And so I'm looking ahead and saying, it seems to me to make the best policy to make those districts as compact and looking ahead, as opposed to simply making an ad hoc adjustment, and then knowing that in ten years, we're going to have to make a very similar adjustment and move in that direction anyway. Thank you.
So is the idea anticipating growth, is that what you mean?
Yes, I think that both Puget Sound Regional Council and the county have looked at where the growth is going to be between now and 2030, and we will be seeing faster growth rates in the eastern part, eastern and southern parts of the county than we're going to be seeing in the western and northern parts. So I'm, you know, as Mr. Cole said, Three and Four are, the council members are in favor of either one, but to me, number Three looks forward a little bit more to where things are going to be growing in the future, and looks ahead to what those natural constituencies are.
Okay. Mr. Chair, could I ask a question? Councilmember Myers, could you just, in very blunt and plain terms, explain to me how Map Three and to some degree Map Four does that in terms of where those lines are drawn?
Well, I think, yes, and I have them both here. I'm primarily looking at, as it goes through Redmond, but also in terms of how in the southern part of District Three in relation to District Nine. I think what it does is it moves District Three a little bit more northeast, and District Nine a little bit more southeast, and if you look at where the growth areas are, in the Kent Valley and in the Snoqualmie Valley, that's where you're going to be seeing the growth taking place at the most rapid rate in the future.
Okay, so Maps One and Two, with respect to the boundary between District Three and Nine, use generally I-90. Maps Three and Four go south of I-90. So that's what you're talking about?
That's correct, yes.
And the concept there being that those valley cities, North Bend, Snoqualmie, as they continue to grow, you've not drawn a line right up against them?
Right, exactly, and I think you had talked earlier, or it was raised earlier, about the continuity of interest among, and you had to have Duval in there as well, but Carnation, Duval, North Bend, Snoqualmie, all of them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mayor David Hutchinson of Lake Forest Park, please.
My name is Dave Hutchinson, Mayor, Lake Forest Park, and thank you for having the hearing. You heard from two council members last night, I understand, in Shoreline, and I got some feedback on that, which was interesting. And first of all, we did have a, we did do a letter, which you received, and I just brought you a copy of that, just to remind you of that. I could expand on this a little bit. Obviously, Four is the, probably the choice, or Three. Three, as I understand the feedback last night, was Shoreline didn't want to be cut in half, that was their position. But I have talked to all the mayors, I spoke to Woodinville Mayor this morning, and he supported the concept of those five cities being together. There's a lot of commerce, a lot of public services that are provided through those different cities, and I cited some in the letter, which Recreation with Shoreline, they actually provide our Parks and Recreation Services. They have a swing pool over there, they have senior center, we share a senior center with them. And with Kenmore, we actually have a shared service, we provide Public Works Service to Kenmore, and currently, Kenmore is looking into shared police services, and we're the one city that they might share with us, and we have a plan for that. And we also, in the police area, we do dispatch with Bothell Police, so, I mean, there's that, all that. Five Twenty Two runs through our city, Aurora, of course, is the one, but Five Twenty Two actually goes from Seattle up Lake City Way, Bothell Way, out to Woodinville. And so that corridor is a very important transportation, planning, policy kinds of things, so there's a lot of discussion about ridership and impact of Five Twenty tolling on Five Twenty Two, and a number of things like that. So we have a lot in common. We also, every month, we meet, the five mayors meet together, and we discuss these things and share stories, and have a good time, and we actually eat food at that time, so that's good. And meet in nice places. So there is, so I'd say, from the standpoint of Lake Forest Park, and I think the council members did echo this last night, I hope they did, that we would like to try and somehow encompass those five cities. When I first came to be a mayor, one of the issues was that the south and Seattle and those areas had an advantage in terms of getting services throughout the county. That coalition of cities has brought a focus on the north end, so we actually balance now with competing for those services. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions of the mayor? Thank you. In addition, we have a couple other elected officials who are here. I know that, and I hope I'm reading this correctly, Lynn Watts, who's a Commissioner of Falls City Water District. Thank you for being here, Commissioner. We also have Ken Haring, who is Mayor of North Bend. Ken, are you here? He was here, huh? Yeah, just left. He has also requested to testify, and we'll get to him eventually. We also have others who want to talk with us here tonight, and is Lori Sotelo, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, Lori Sotelo here? Yes.
Hi, my name's Lori Sotelo. I'd like to thank you all for your service. I know that this is volunteer. I serve as a volunteer in several capacities, I understand the passion that goes onto that. My husband and I bought our first home on Mercer Island when I was 25 years old. We decided it was time for us to get serious about where we were going to raise our family. We love the small-town feel and the sense of community. We scratched and saved our money so we could afford to make our mortgage, because we believed it was the best place to raise our children. Before moving to Mercer Island, we lived on Bainbridge Island, on Capitol Hill in Seattle, and in Kent, Washington. All are unique places to live in the northwest, so we had a good perspective in choosing Mercer Island for our home. This is my fourth districting since I moved to Mercer Island. No fail, there's always been one districting map that puts Mercer Island in with the Seattle District. It seems to be a theme repeated every decade, and mid-decade this last time, and one I feel compelled to address again. As I understand it, your charge on the King County Districting Committee is to look at the King County population and communities of commonality as you draw your districts that will provide fair representation to residents that live there. Mercer Island is a suburban city. Most of us move there for the quality, and move there for that quality, and see ourselves as Eastsiders. Most of you know Mercer Island shares cooperative agreements with Eastside cities, and our children are involved with sporting activities with Eastside organizations. Over the year, my children, our children, have played sports, challenging teams from East King County cities like Bellevue, Kirkland, Issaquah, and Samamish. No one can deny the rivalry that exists between Bellevue High School and the slugs of Mercer Island. When we shop, we choose the Eastside cities. We shop at Bellevue Square and Factoria Mall, and our Costco is Issaquah. Our medical care is in Bellevue. Our last child was born at Overlake Hospital. Over the years, Overlake has tended to the bumps and stitches and plastering of my active children. When my son had his critical asthma attack in seventh grade, Medic One came from Bellevue to transfer him for care at Overlake. When we need our police department, a dispatcher in Bellevue assists us. Seattle is a lovely urban city. Their issues from transportation, public safety, and education are urban in nature. Their cultural attractions are well-placed in an urban setting. Many Mercer Islanders have lived there and have a perspective of life in the big city, and we have chosen to live in suburban Mercer Island rather than urban Seattle. Positions and votes taken by our current Sixth District County Council member are most closely aligned with the suburban interests of Mercer Island. I have real concerns about the needs of the small-town of Mercer Island when its 22,000 residents, being overshadowed by the interests of the remaining 200,000 residents of an urban-centered county council district. I currently support Maps Three, One, Three, and Four, that don't place Mercer Island in an urban district. Thank you for hearing my testimony.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Sotelo? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you all for your volunteer service. This is a good thing, and it's part of what makes this country the way it is. And I'm looking at the good side of the country, thank you. I have been a resident of Mercer Island, my family and I, for 42 years, and I just have one thing to say, to refer to Ms. Sotelo, ditto. She's terrific.
Thank you for that. Mayor, you took a brief break, and we missed you. Ken Haring, Mayor of North Bend, did you want to talk with us?
Yes, thank you very much. Hi, I'm Ken Haring, I'm Mayor of North Bend, and I too appreciate your service. This has got to be one of the toughest things that any one of us has ever had to do, and it happens every four, five, or 10 years. We go through this same dance, as it were. You know, it appears to me that in larger cities, maybe even the medium to larger cities, is appropriate, and to have the cities split into representation by two or more representatives, I think that's an advantage to those larger cities. But I think in the smaller cities, it's a disadvantage to being split. Because the smaller cities are so small, it is difficult to represent them to begin with. So having a small portion of one city like North Bend in two, you know, in a separate district disenfranchises those folks, or tends to, or could. I think it's very important, numbers one, two, and three take a portion of the citizens, some of them are rural citizens, but they all call North Bend home. They call me mayor, and many of them yell at me because my name is not on their ballot. And I've got to explain to them, you don't live in the city, but they think they do. They think they're part of the city of North Bend. So I think that it's very important for both North Bend and Snoqualmie that you keep those cities all in one district. The other side that I was looking at with that, and it's probably just a kind of a moot argument, but having North Bend geographically separated from the other residents of District Nine would tend to more disenfranchise those folks. And I was going to say also, I'm not certain that number four doesn't take some of the residents of North Bend out of District Three as well. But it's very important, I think, to have all of us in District Three. But thank you, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Chair, could I have a question?
Mayor, there might be a question here for you, if that's okay?
Sure, no problem.
Mr. Mayor, I would want you to know that all members of the committee have particular attention to the communities on the south side of I-90 out there. A couple of these maps do draw I-90, or use I-90 as a border because we're directed by our laws to look at natural or even man-made boundaries, and that's been a somewhat logical one, but we're sensitive to the interests of the community there. Is it, help me understand a little bit more here, but is it correct that the incorporated boundaries of North Bend all lie north of I-90?
No, it's not.
That's not correct.
And some of the urban growth area is south of I-90 as well. But there is one portion of the city that is north of I-90, it's called Forester Woods. It's on...
South of I-90.
Excuse me, south of I-90, yeah. On number one, draft number one, is that squared-off area that is bordered right there.
Where we jump over there.
Yeah.
All right. And so if I'm understanding your testimony, it's that we should pay attention to make sure not only to capture the incorporated areas of North Bend south of I-90, but the potential annexation areas, and maybe even the quasi-suburban, or the suburban...
Even those rural areas. Even the rural areas, they call North Bend home.
Okay. And the concern would be, if I'm hearing you correctly, that if we were to carve those rural but populated areas off, that they're essentially left straggling out there in a District Nine and may not get the attention that...
That's my point. Thank you very much, yeah.
Just one quick follow-up.
Sure.
So I'm looking at the existing boundary currently. I don't know if it's, if you're...
It actually follows Rattlesnake Ridge, if I'm not mistaken, and goes through Rattlesnake Lake and Chester Morris Lake.
And is that, if we were to sort of use guidance, is that a good barrier that, does that...
I think it's a very good natural barrier because there is no residents past or south of that point until you get into the, I can't think of the name of the town down there, but, you know, down towards Edenham, Clough, that area, so.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Here. Okay, there may have been individuals who got here late who also have either been listening and want to talk to us, and we certainly are willing to do that. I'd only ask that you identify yourself, and please step forward. Go ahead.
Sure.
My name's Nancy Spath, and I live on Mercer Island, and I have since 1985. But I was born in Everett, and I grew up in Seattle. And I lived in the northern part of District Two for a good part of my life, on Capitol Hill and in Madison Park. And I will tell you that we on Mercer Island are very different from those people. I am also a precinct committee officer for the 41st District. And so I go to meetings with the Bellevue people and the Renton people, Marcy Maxwell, Judy Clyburn, and to separate us from them, when I am part of the 41st District, it's like making me a different person in the Second District than I am in the 41st District. So that would be very hard to figure out for me. Some of our people in the 41st District don't understand it because two of our 41st District people, actually, two of them, yes, Littsow and Clyburn are on Mercer Island, and Marcy's in Renton. So that would be a difficult divide, a difficult thing to understand. And my children also went to the high school there and were very involved with the eastside. I lived in Bellevue before I moved to Mercer Island. So I have to say that Mercer Island is much more like the eastside than we are about Seattle, and I lived there. I can speak to that. Thank you very much.
Anyone else who wants to talk to us tonight? Yes, ma'am, step forward, please.
Is it okay I didn't sign up?
Of course. That was why I was asking. I know people came in late and either neglected to or overlooked it.
My name is Jackie Dunbar, and I live on Mercer Island, and thank you all for taking the time to come tonight and listen to us. I really want to also agree with Lori Sotello in everything that she said, but I would also like to add a little bit more information, which actually is more intact with the lady who just spoke about the district. In three different meetings, I have heard Representative Judy Clyburn talk about the fact that I-90 will be told. And so to me, that means our district will be broken up, and it would really be harder for citizens on Mercer Island to participate in the city. So I think knowing that the bridge is going to be told is information we already have, and that would be a hindrance to citizen participation in local government. And so we are an eastside community. We, as Lori Sotello said, we shop on the east side, we go to the east side, that's our culture. I do work downtown and like Seattle very much, but really it's a different place. It's an urban area, and Seattle is more suburban. So I would ask you not to put Seattle in with a district that is downtown, but to keep it on the east side. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, did you want to say some words as well?
Please.
And again, please identify yourself.
My name is Kelsey Beck, and I work at an organization called Food Lifeline, which is a hunger relief organization, and through that, I have previously served on the board of the North Urban Human Services Alliance, and remained engaged with the organization. Anusha hasn't come up with a statement, and so as some of the others tonight, I speak purely on my own, but just coming with that experience. The North Urban Human Services Alliance looks at the communities of the five North King County cities as one community facing a lot of similar needs, particularly around transit and around access to services, including human services. And so in listening to some of the testimony tonight, I do feel like the area would benefit from having one strong voice on the council who identifies with the communities of North King County.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to talk with us? Yes, Mr. Burrows. Step forward. And identify yourself, sir.
I'm James Burrows. Been here a couple of times, not in front of you guys. Okay, wait until I get all those passed out. I'm going to talk about them.
Thank you.
On the left side of each page is a plot of one of the four proposed districting plans. Sigma, the standard deviation of the district's populations, which is a violation of one person, one vote, is remarkably close to zero, thanks to John Slosser's efforts. Delta is the average of each district's violation of equality. In other words, it's sort of the same sort of number as Sigma is. Gamma is the average of each district's population on the wrong side of the lines halfway between adjacent districts, which can be considered the violation of compactness, which I understand Sally Poliak is concerned about. Is nearly equal in each of the four proposals, but fairly large. On the right side of each page is how gamma can be reduced by an exchange of blocks. For example, if block A, little A, is on the wrong side of the AB line, closer to the population center of District B, and block little B is closer to A's center, these two blocks, district assignments are exchanged. Plan One's exchange didn't reduce gamma much, and District Two is messed up. Plan Two's exchange increased sigma too much. The exchanges of Plans Three and Four worked fairly well. Okay, the last page is my own game plan. What I did first was to select preliminary district assignments of each block to the closest population center of the 2005 districts. In other words, I'm trying to make the councilmembers happy. Do the exchanges above, reassign blocks to reduce gamma, sigma, excuse me, reassign blocks to reduce gamma, and then go back and forth between those two until both are as small as possible. So that's that last picture there. I don't imagine there's any questions. You guys are all confused by this stuff.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Burrows. Are there any questions of Jim Burrows? Thank you for preparing this information, and for those of you who haven't heard from you, I think in essence what you're doing is looking at these districts from a population standpoint, where are the population centers in the county if we had it divided into nine districts?
Yeah.
And you take it from there, and that's...
Yeah.
And I want the people here to know you've done a service to us in the past by looking at that, which doesn't necessarily look at the current status quo, but looks at it random, more randomly.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for that. Okay, anyone else who is interested in talking to us? Any comments from any of my colleagues about any, anything, even though this isn't a formal meeting, anything that we've heard tonight, or anything that you would like us to take up?
Just make, since we've had Mr. Chair, some comment, or some testimony tonight on Mercer Island and that map that moves it in. Just, one of the things that the committee is looking at and the thinking is, based on testimony we've heard and input, is how much district should be centered on Seattle for this regional governing body, the King County, which is our regional government. And there is some thinking that perhaps it makes sense to have districts which include suburban cities in them, so you don't have members solely focused on Seattle-centric issues, particularly on a regional governing body. So I thought it was important to note that, that there is a line of thinking that says there is value in having districts, and some of these maps do that, where you've got a mix of communities, some rural, some suburban, rather than exclusively urban or exclusively suburban, or almost exclusively rural with respect to three and nine. And we're, I don't know that we're struggling, but we're working through the philosophy on that, and so the testimony tonight was helpful in terms of the input there, and I just wanted to thank the folks that came for sharing that.
Sure. And I know that my colleagues are thankful too. Does anybody want to say anything?
Yeah, I think it is wonderful to have the people from Mercer Island come out, and specifically from the areas that we're talking about. And I will, I will point out that, you know, a lot of areas are treated differently. I mean, Issaquah can be in three, or in nine, or split in half. Thank you, Simon. So these maps were designed with the intention of giving some big choices rather than a lot of just little fiddling. And so in, not in defense of that, but just to point out, for example, Mr. Burrows' map actually has Mercer Island split in three different districts. So if you're, if you're curious to look at, you know, a grander idea or a more maybe invasive idea, that gives you an idea just looking specifically at the numbers. But in the same map that some, some from Mercer Island said that they liked, and for the reasons that they liked and the reasons they didn't like it, you can look at that same map and look at District One and see that you have people in the same district that live in Laurelhurst, and also in rural, unincorporated, farther out than Woodinville, King County. So that's the challenge that we're dealing with. So it might, it might sometimes seem like it's just very simple to say, we like it here, and that's why it should be that way. But there are other parts of that map where people are giving input to. And as Rod said, it's a challenge, and we're very fortunate to have the people showing up to talk to us and let us know what they're thinking.
Sure, go ahead. Sally, did you want to Poliak?
One thing I would actually encourage you to do is, I had an opportunity to look at the Bellevue City Council's on Bellevue TV, Monday night took up the different proposals, and it was a fascinating discussion about many of the issues we talked about tonight. What communities did the Bellevue City Council feel that they worked most with, you know, and should they be split into one, should they be in one district or split into two? And one of the concepts that they talked about, that they are preparing a letter for us that we have not received yet, was actually looking at a map that, that had Bellevue with Newcastle with Issaquah and Mercer Island. All of them felt like the Mercer Island option was off the table from the get-go, but they felt like they worked with Mercer Island, Newcastle, and Issaquah more likely than any other city, and that we should look at a map like that. So it's fascinating, you know, a lot of discussion, I think echoing, you know, John's comments. There's lots of different opinions, different ways that you can put communities of interest together, and so I'd encourage you actually to take a peek at that on Bellevue TV, because it was, it was a very thoughtful discussion.
Thank you. Okay. Well, there really isn't anything further on our agenda tonight, and the purpose, I really think, has been served in hearing from you, and we appreciate that. It might be worth, you know, observing that we also can, this isn't the only time that you can communicate with us. We have other meetings scheduled, our next one, if I can find my list here, that's never in front of me, I think it's next week, and I believe it's Des Moines, and then we have a meeting in Seattle on July 12th at Van Assel Community Center, both of those meetings at 6:30 PM. The one in Des Moines is at the Highline Community College. And appreciate, I hope you do, that you can also communicate with us online and also find out other comments that have been directed to us by going to kingcounty.gov/districting. Kingcounty.gov/districting, in terms of finding other ways to communicate with us. Again, thank you for taking the time from your busy schedules to meet with us. John Slosser, thank you for your help in breaking this down further for us tonight. Unless there's anything further, this hearing is adjourned. Thank you.